So if Jamie doesn't-
All right, good evening. Welcome to the May 14th New Market Planning Board meeting. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Second agenda item is public comments. Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? Hearing none, I will close the public comment session at 7:01. Next is review and approval of minutes. The April 9th, 2019-
Site review, oh, those are the regular minutes, right?
These are regular minutes.
You did send out notes from the two site visits.
Okay.
And I don't know if you want to approve those as official minutes or not.
Well, let's go through this first one first. April 9th, 2019 minutes. Is there a motion for, to approve?
Someone?
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any discussion, comments, revisions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? I am abstaining, as I was not at the meeting. Um, the April 13th minutes or notes, I do not have anything on that.
You didn't get them?
Did you email them out?
Susan, did you make copies?
Oh, so we'll just-
If you would like to vote on them at the next meeting-
Yeah, we'll do it at the next meeting, yeah.
And I'm not sure we, everybody gets copies of those.
That's fine. Okay, first on the agenda, regular business. This is Robin and Phyllis Page, William Benedetto. Continuation of a public hearing for an application for major site plan review at 10 Norton Lane, tax map R5 lot 11-1 in the B3 zone. The proposal is to develop the property as a golf driving range and practice area. The site development will include a new driveway, parking tee boxes, gravel walkways, putting greens, chipping areas, landscaping, and utilities. All right, so the applicant has requested a continuation, but before we get into that day, can you just update everybody here? You, I believe, sent a letter out in relative to site plan review for this application?
Yes, I did. Upon the request of the TRC, I sent a letter to the applicant and to Mr. Seaver, who is the applicant's engineer, just indicating that the plans as submitted to us would not be approvable under the town zoning ordinance because it did not meet the criteria for excavation that's incidental to development. And it was the feeling of the TRC and also myself as zoning administrator that what was being proposed was, in effect, a gravel operation, which is not in allowed use in the Aquafer overlay district. So on that basis, I advised him of that and I recommended or advised him that he could appeal that decision to the zoning board of adjustment if he disagreed. I did speak with him last week and he said that his client was still deciding whether or not to pursue a variance for the project or whether or not the applicant wanted to revise the scale of the project so it would be in line with the definition for incidental to development. So at this point, he hasn't made a final decision and the zoning board has not received an application at this point. So it, I recommended that they submit and they did, a letter requesting a continuation until the June meeting. And at that point, we can perhaps have some closure on it or move forward with another continuation until we have a chance to review revised plans.
Okay, thank you. So for the abutters that are out there relative to this issue, is that the plan that they submitted that we talked about at the site walk, we will not accept that going forward. If they choose to go forward with the driving range, they have to change that plan significantly as Diane has determined that that's basically a gravel operation. So they are, as she just said, they're deciding what their options are going to be and how they're going to proceed or if they're going to proceed. So it will not go forward with the planning board in its current iteration. So with that, I will request a motion to continue.
So moved.
We need a date certain.
Do the date certain for, um-
June-
Is it June 10th? I'm sorry.
11th. I make a motion to continue the hearing on Robert and Phyllis Page, William Benedetto, for tax map R5 lot 11-1 in the B3 zone to the June 11th planning board meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Abstaining.
Bill's abstaining. Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Next on the agenda is Town of New Market, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC. Continuation of a public hearing for an application for minor site plan and special use permit at 4 Young's Lane, tax map U3. Lots formerly 48 and 49, lots recently merged into one lot in the B2 zone. Proposal is to construct a new tower-based personal wireless service facility consisting of 150-foot monopole telecommunications tower and related equipment. So I understand, Ms. Hardy, that there is a, you have a recommendation relative to this application?
Yes, I do. I've provided my recommendation to the board on May 13th. And just to give you a quick status report, at the March 19th meeting, the planning board unanimously voted to approve a special use permit to allow the cell tower at this location, subject to the applicant meeting all the site plan review requirements and the performance standards in the zoning ordinance. And at that same meeting, the planning board accepted the application for site plan for technical review as it was substantially complete. We conducted a site walk on the property on April 13th and our town engineer raised some concerns regarding grading and repair of the pavement that is there and relocation of some easements that were interfering with some work that they had actually done for-
Sorry.
Drainage improvements on Young's Lane. And the applicant at that site walk worked collaboratively with our engineer and came up with some design solutions and went forward and had the engineer make those revisions to the plan. Mr. McDonald, our review engineer, reviewed them and has provided his sign off and I think I've given you a copy of his email. So given that, I am recommending that the planning board approve the site plan application, subject to five conditions. Would you like me to review those?
Can, can you just hold on for one minute? I'd like to ask, are there any abutters here who would like to speak on this subject? No abutters, okay. Go ahead.
Okay. So the first condition is obviously complying with all the terms of the zoning ordinance and site plan regulations with respect to ongoing operation and maintenance of the cell tower. The second is that the owner of the tower provide annual certifications to the town's code enforcement officer, that the tower is in compliance with existing building and safety requirements and that it is, the structure is still needed for the operation of the owner's network and that needs to be submitted to the town annually, no later than the end of the year, December 31st. Third condition, given the potentially hazardous situation, which could occur if the tower was abandoned or unmonitored, that the town set form, the form and its security for a bond to provide for the removal of the cell tower in the event it is abandoned and that bonding would be consistent with the town's site review regulations and also that the town require adequate insurance for damage and for accidents. And many of these items are already covered in the lease agreement that has been worked out between the town administrator and the AT&amp;T. So I reviewed it with legal counsel just to make sure that it wasn't in conflict or redundant. And so the fourth condition is that at the end of the lease agreement, that AT&amp;T will remove and restore the premises according to the lease. And the fifth condition is that the lease recognizes that there is an ability to co-locate additional carriers on the tower in the future. And that should be tower, not town, sorry. And with that, I would recommend that the board make a motion to accept the application with the conditions so stated.
Yes, yeah. Okay, first off, if there's nobody in the public who has any, anything to say, I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:10. Is there any discussion on this?
Suggested six conditions of approval for the recorrelated complaint. And I don't recall the term of the lease. Is it a five-year, 10-year, 15, 50, what is it? I just don't recall.
Beth Cole, Attorney for AT&amp;T, down from Martin 5.
Hi.
Seen most of you before. The lease is an initial five-year with, I think, four five-year renewals. I don't have a copy with me, so it could be five.
So potentially 25.
Yeah, 20 to 25 years.
May want to consider having the lease area monumented?
Any other comments, suggestions? Diane, I just had one on, actually number five. Do we really need to make that a condition of approval?
It's, I believe, in our town's-
It's part of the lease, right?
It's in our town's regulations and I, I'm not sure, but it might be part of federal law.
No, but is it part of our-
Yes, it is, absolutely.
Site plan?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay. I'm fine with it then. Okay, so, um-
It's not a problem because they indicated they would be willing to make it available for other carriers. The lease does reflect that, is my understanding.
So just a question on, from Bill. So are you proposing that just the squared-off area where the tower be, not the, not the access road to it?
That's right.
Just the four corners of the-
The lease area.
Of the leased area for the tower's investment.
If you can find that, you can find the rest.
Yeah.
Was there a question on, on the-
There was this language in our ordinance that states that there should be an opportunity for co-location with-
Right, so-
It was my understanding that that was addressed in the lease in some way.
Right, yeah. Frank Kelly with SEI Communications. The lease not only allows for co-location, but it also has provisions that the town gets additional revenue if there's additional carriers that go on the tower.
Yeah, yeah, and Diane, my only point is that as a planning board, we have no ability to- The town may decide they don't want to allow co-, I don't know why they wouldn't allow other carriers, but we have no ability to tie the town to forcing them. Okay.
It is in the ordinance.
Okay, all right. That's fine then.
So I think the point being is if it's in our ordinance, the legal counsel should be responsible for ensuring it's in the lease.
Yep, yep.
Right, and he has reviewed this and approved it.
So there's been two suggested additional recommendations for conditions. One is recording of the easement plan and second is monimation, monumentation of the lease area.
Of the tower area, because there's also leasing and access.
Excuse me? Oh, yes.
I think we're saying the tower area.
The lease tower, yeah.
Just for my benefit, perhaps, what does, what's the term, monument?
Monumentation.
Monumentation, what does that provide?
It's defined in, it's defined in regulations, so it will provide markers, permanent markers at the corners of the lease area so that you can figure out where the lease area is.
And they're set by a licensed service.
They should need to-
Right. Everybody okay with those suggested additions?
Is the applicant clear on where we're looking to have the monumentation set?
Yeah, yeah, so I'm clear. We're gonna, we're gonna put monuments at the corners of the, the lease area, the-
Surrounding the tower path.
Surrounding the power.
100 foot by 100 foot.
Hundred, so we can put corners there. We had a discussion on, on the site walk that the easement plan would be the as-built plan after it was constructed and that would be the one that we would submit for the easement.
So, yeah, the easement would be defined after the roadway that was built.
After it's constructed.
Exactly.
Perfect, yeah. That's our understanding.
Yes, yep. Does anybody have any other, anybody have any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I want to entertain a motion for approval.
I'll make, go ahead, Bill. No, you got it. With your two-
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And before we go too far, I should, I'm going to close the public hearing on this also. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, motion passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Alrighty, next on the agenda is, I apologize, I'm not going to pronounce this right. Masaran Group LLC. Public hearing for an application for design review regarding two additions to an existing building. 12,610 square feet and 11,000 square feet with new parking and access drives. Lot is located at Forbes Road, tax map R3, lot 9-3 in the B2 zone. The application is available to view at the planning board office during normal business hours. Welcome, I just ask people representing the applicant to introduce yourselves and then you can give us an overview of what you're proposing.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Jonathan Ring from Jonesa Beach Engineers in Stratum and with us tonight are Jason Gray-
Justin.
Justin Gray, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
He's right here, Justin. Justin Gray from Promocentric and Masaran Group and Paige Libby from our office. You've seen Paige before. This is a piece of property located at 5 Forbes Road in the New Market Industrial Park and this is a design review, as you say, concept, plan, hearing. And this is a park that was built, as you know, in 1983 to 85. We have a 24,000 square foot building. Will the microphone pick me up if I walk over there or do I take it?
No, it will not. Take it with you, can take it with you, slides right out of that.
This is the existing building, right here, and you have two sheets in your plan set. You also have the color rendering that we just, Paige just gave out. So this is the existing building right here. There are parking spaces in the front. We have an access drive around the back to the loading docks for deliveries. And there are parking spaces here on the right-hand side as well. So this back area is obviously where all the loading takes place. There's also an at-grade loading door on the backside here. And there's an existing leach field here in front. This is on municipal water with onsite leach field. And what we're proposing to do, Promocentric's a screen printing company and Justin will talk about that in just a couple more minutes. Business is going so well that they'd like to expand with two building additions. Building addition A on the, on the left-hand side of 12,610 square feet over here and addition B on the right-hand side with 11,600 square feet. We have additional parking proposed here on the left-hand side. Because this building addition B pushes off to the right, we've pushed the parking out this way and we have some parking in the back and we've shifted and adjusted the loading docks. The additions are about 15% office space and the rest of it is warehouse.
Excuse me, did you say 15%?
15, 1.5, approximately. 1.5% office space, that's what we're thinking at this point. We do have some additional septic that we'll put here on the side. We have a septic pipe coming out of the addition A to get there and we have to extend this, relocate the septic tank, the existing septic tank and pump station on the right-hand side to accommodate addition B. Parking calculations are shown in note number three on sheet C2 over in this side where we, again, figure the 15% office and 85% warehouse. Today, there are five loading docks out back on the property and we're proposing a total of eight with one at-grade door up on this side. As you can see, the configuration's a little bit tighter. The depth is still the same, but it's a little tighter with respect to the, the length of it and Justin is going to have to manage the deliveries and the size of the delivery vehicles, most of which is UPS and FedEx, so that's not usually a problem. Drainage and stormwater. The site is an old gravel pit, which you know about, with very well-drained soils and a deep water table. Most of the stormwater disappears on site. It's proposed that that will still be the case. It's going to disappear on site. There will be no increase in drainage to the abutters. We're planning to have some porous pavement on the left-hand side here and we have a detention basin rain garden on the right-hand side to accommodate the stormwater flow. There are no wetlands on the property. We realize that this is, that this is a design review hearing. It's a preliminary conceptual and the board cannot act officially on waivers, but we do have three waivers that are called out in note number 11 on sheet C2 that we would like to get some feedback from you concerning, before we go ahead and finish off all the rest of the design and come back to you in a couple of months with a complete package. First of all, these are from the town regulations for those in the audience whom might be abutters. The first one is the parking aisle width from 25 feet to 20 feet on the left-hand side where the existing building, as you know, is, is right here in this location. We're kind of squeezed between the left side of the building and that existing property line with the abutter, the neighbor in the industrial park, so we're trying to give as much green space, it's not much, five feet or six feet on that left-hand side. So we're requesting an aisle width waiver down to 20 feet on that side where 25 is typically required. We also have, some of this parking is in the 30-foot side yard setback in the industrial park. Again, that's another commercial industrial neighbor on this side. And because we're pushing here, we have an existing transformer that we need to save. Obviously, we have a building, we can't shift that, so we're trying to squeeze this into that side. And finally, we have the plan scale where we're requesting a 30-scale plan to show the entire site on one sheet and have space to put notes rather than the 20-scale that's required. So we do ask for your feedback and inclination, inclination on these possible waivers this evening. So Justin, is there anything you'd like to add or explain about business?
I'd like to just talk a little bit about the, I'd like to talk a little bit about the company and the, the operation that we have. Masaran Group LLC is the owner of the building and Promocentric is the business that I also own that occupies the building. So we've been there for about five years. Business has been going extremely well at a rate of about 20% year-over-year growth, so we anticipate, we're already a little bit squeezed, so we anticipate continued growth. And at the same time, we know we're going to be overbuilding at the beginning. So in the interim, until we occupy the entire space, we'd like to help fund the building of, the building with, by filling it with tenants. That would be low-impact tenants, low, high warehouse usage, low employee count usage. So I would intend to have, you know, very low impact as far as traffic and employees on the neighborhood with the, the final goal of Promocentric occupying the majority of the space. If you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them as far as the company or the plan itself.
Why don't we ask questions first?
Who owns the land?
I do.
Okay.
Or Masaran Group LLC does.
Okay. And the abutter to the west is owned by who?
To the left?
Yep.
That is Paul White Tile Flooring Company. I have made them aware of it and he is, he's given his thumbs up as far as making accommodations as needed. He's very, very, I would say gung ho, but he's accepting.
Have you bounced off him the idea of a lot line revision so that you would be able to comply with zoning?
I have not.
Okay.
And that's something that I would defer to Jonesa Beach on.
Yeah, well, first of all, it's, it's, I think it's not, well, the zoning is the setback you're talking about, but the regulation is a planning board regulation, which I understand you can waive. We also have a drive, there's an existing driveway right here. So even if we went with a lot line adjustment, we only gain- Boy, the eyes are getting really old.
You'd be into the driveway.
Yeah, it, it's 25 feet at the tightest here, so we'd still have to, there's actually not enough land to do the entire area within that.
Yeah, you gain some. And Joe, what do you think about 20-foot aisle?
We would gain some.
It seems pretty narrow.
Well, again, it's, it's folks who go there every day, so they're used to the operation and if they have a big pickup truck, they'll park out front. People like me with a golf Volkswagen will park over here.
20 feet is really narrow. I mean, what, what, what town allows 20-foot aisles?
Well, we've gone down to 18 in some cases, depending on the situation. Sure. We have done, if we need to, with, with folks who are going to a work employee situation. Rather, I mean, I wouldn't do that for general off-the-street customers who are coming by to do something because they wouldn't be familiar with the terrain.
Yeah.
But employees-
And the majority of that usage-
Man, it's wonderful that the business is doing great. That's, that's awesome. And I think you'll find this board is going to try to help you meet the regulations the best it can. But we also want you, you know, long-term to be happy with your property.
Right. Yeah, and just one final comment on that. Those that would be parking on the left-hand side of the building would be employees and typically those employees are driving mid-size at, at that largest vehicle size. Not that I'm trying to obviously sway, but that's just feedback.
Can I ask a question relative to the parking?
I just want to follow up on that question. So with the question, so are you providing the number of parking spaces through this design to meet the, our regulation relative to the total square footage?
Yes, yep.
Will you actually be using all of this parking?
Probably not, but the regulations require, that's, that's what we show in note number, number three over here.
So my question was, it was the same thing as, you know, our, our regulations require a certain amount of parking spaces. If you believe you don't need that number of parking spaces, I would certainly consider granting a waiver to that.
The parking count.
The parking count.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement.
I mean, obviously, we try to.
I mean, we have, at the most right now, we have 20 cars there, total.
In, in the big picture, I personally, I won't speak for the rest of the board, but I personally would rather see less impervious area.
Right.
If it meets your needs, rather than having the whole thing paved just 'cause it's our, you know, one of our requirements, as long as it meets your, your needs.
I think that would suit our needs.
Any other feedback on that topic? It may make some of Bill's questions and comments, concerns disappear. Go ahead.
You mentioned that most of your employees have full-size or smaller cars, what about, how many employees have compact cars where you can offer compact parking to them?
Plenty. At least half, if not more.
So that might be an option, too.
Absolutely.
And I agree with Chairman Bottom in that, you know, there's quite a bit of impervious area here.
Correct.
And it is a gravel pit, we recognize that, where there's an opportunity to high permeability. My question regarding that is, what is the depth to the high seasonal water table, and is it going to be an impact associated with that, having porous pavement in that vicinity?
Do you remember how deep the water table was?
Across the street?
Yeah.
This is Paige Libby.
And that's, that situation was a little bit different because they were excavating down so far, but we didn't encounter any seasonal high water table across the street, directly across the street, so there should be no.
I mean, the area that's currently being excavated?
Correct, yeah.
So there shouldn't be any issue with infiltration in the same?
But generally speaking, you're, you're not gonna do previous pavement unless you're comfortable you're four feet above the water table, right?
Absolutely true, yep.
And you haven't done test pits to confirm that at this point.
No, we have, we have a proposed new leach field area here.
Right.
And we need to relocate the septic tank over here, so we will be doing some test pits out here and we'll verify that. My guess is that the water table's six feet down, but that's just a guess without, you know, knowing, 'cause I've been, I did some work on the pieces across the street 15 years ago, but we'll verify this seasonal hot.
So you have 114 parking spaces now on this?
Yes.
Plan to meet our regulations?
Yes.
You know, I, I would like to have you guys leave here with some direction anyways, is what we'd be more comfortable with, which I think is only fair. I don't think, you know, I, obviously, I don't disagree with Bill's concerns about the aisle width. The setback, you know, seeing as another industrial use, I don't, I personally don't have an issue with that, and I understand your answer, you know, people are gonna park there and stay there all day, whatnot. If we would consider waiving the parking requirements, number of spaces, what number of spaces do you think you would come back with? And the reason I'm asking that is, you know, if the 20-foot aisle width, if you could eliminate a bunch of those spaces on that side, that issue goes away also.
Well, we'll have to talk about it.
Yeah, the ones up against the building, they could do these right here.
We might be able to. I mean, it'd be better to get rid of the ones on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
But, right, right.
Yeah, and you have more green space, more buffer.
But we could shift the aisle toward the building, as you say, and put the spaces on the left. I mean, either way, we have to maintain this transformer, the existing transformer here, we're not gonna move that.
Right.
But that's a possible solution, I think we could, I mean, this is way more parking than we actually need, and I think that we will ever need.
Yeah, and that's why I think it's worthwhile having a discussion tonight. You know, 'cause obviously, anything that reduces stormwater runoff is a good thing. I, I think, my thoughts would be to keep the ones near the building and have more green space on the other side. Eliminate those.
So you said we currently have how many spaces as proposed?
114.
So at the most, we would eliminate maybe 15, so we'd have about 100, and I think 100, quite honestly, would be more than, again, more than we would ever, ever possibly need.
Well, you can eliminate others, you know, I would just say I would start with those if that was your choice.
Potentially, another option is, is that you have a phased plan on parking, so you're gonna build, let's say you need, you know, for, you don't know who your tenants are gonna be, but to adequately service them, you need 80, or whatever, I'm just throwing the number out there. So you build 80, but you permit, so all you gotta do is go, whatever you have to do to build a parking lot, or if you have to pull building permits, I don't wanna say just 80, but, but you've already been permitted by the planning board to construct more parking, you've gone through those hoops already.
Call it 100.
But don't, but don't build that right now.
Correct, oh, yep, I got you. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Well, and it appears your entrance to that, to the addition A is going to be off of that parking lot, so it's not like you're gonna wanna eliminate everything on the left side.
Correct.
Or do a phased-in, because they need the back for all the access.
Yep.
So the only other elimination or phased approach would be over to the right-hand side, but then you'll, you're looking like you have two access points for addition B off of there.
Well, that, I mean, I would, I would leave that up to you guys to figure out how you wanted to phase it, if that's what you wanted to do.
Yep, we can do that.
Go ahead.
You're adjacent to the Pan Am Railways right away, do they have setback requirements that come into play with respect to the building and also with respect to pavement?
No, I don't believe so. No.
Nope. They built the house right to the setback.
We've worked on properties in Exeter that are 15 feet away.
So it's not, not an issue.
Um, so.
Do they have some setback requirements in some areas?
They may, and some, I just did a project in Exeter where there was no setback requirement from them, but, so to kind of continue this discussion on the parking, you're gonna try to eliminate the 20-foot aisle, is that what we're kinda hearing, by eliminating parking?
So you'd like us to, the, the town, the town reg is, let me see, I wrote a waiver request letter, the town reg is 25.
25, correct.
But in my waiver, our waiver request letter, we observed that the existing parking, based on the 1983 plans, was approved with nine by 18-foot parking spaces and a 24-foot aisle. So, right now, these violate that 25-foot dimension.
Yep.
We do show 25 on this side, because we also wanna accommodate the UPS trucks and so forth.
I personally don't have a huge problem with 20, I mean, I understand Bill has concern with it, and I don't wanna speak for the whole board, because it is parking, but I would rather see, if, if you could get to 24, I'd rather see 24. And if eliminating parking helps you get there, I think I'd rather see that.
It will also make a difference if it's single-loaded, instead of double-loaded with respect to the concern for, I mean, even though we know it's gonna be employees who are here every day, because it's only single-loaded, there's less likelihood somebody's gonna have a problem backing into each other.
Right.
Okay, we'll take that under advisement, see what we can do.
Okay, good. So that kinda talks about both the issues, the aisle width and the parking location. The scale, I'm gonna speak for the board, I don't care about the scale, make it a scale that we can read. And just before we go too far, I see this, is there, are you on the bottom, ma'am?
I am.
Do you have anything to say, you wanna, if you do, you need to just come up here so we can hear it in the microphone. Come on up. Oh, no, that's fine, if you don't want to, that's fine.
You don't have.
Well, I, I just had a question, I live at 13 Stanorm.
Could you give us your name, please?
Oh, Melinda Libby.
Thank you.
So I live at 13 Stanorm, which is the condo development right behind the industrial park. So currently, there are trucks, not you, that load at like 3:00, 4:00 in the morning, and it's super, super annoying, so that was one of the questions, is how much do you anticipate the truck traffic increasing during, before and after, like, waking hours?
I can't speak for the neighbors, but for us.
I know, that's why I said not you.
Yeah, hold on, hold on, hold on a minute, just, ask your questions to me and I'll forward them to you, 'cause you need to get the microphone, too, okay?
Oh, okay. There you go, can share.
So as, I do not anticipate any increase or any change in our trucking schedule. You know, basically, it's, we have UPS coming and going twice per day, they drop off in the morning, and they pick up in the afternoon, and that will, that will not change. The only thing that might, it will continue as basically it currently does, which is a random 18-wheeler in our lot, which is, if I had to, if I had to guess, it's twice a month at the most, at our facility.
Do they idle at night?
Not at all. No one's at the building at night, we don't run second shifts and we don't anticipate it either, and I've gotten to the office early and I know what you're talking about, I've seen trucks, 'cause I think they get really early deliveries, and, yeah, so I don't anticipate any change in that whatsoever.
Okay, thank you.
That was my question, I'm just scared of letting you know.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
What about future tenants, though?
Well, that's a good question. I do hope to and plan on leasing to low-impact tenants, because I run my business there and I, you know, so I anticipate, that's part of the reasoning behind the 85% warehouse, 15% or so office space, so I don't wanna have a lot of cars there, and, but at the same time, I can't predict what the future might be in terms of trucks coming and going. I can only say that that's quite rare, what I see next door, and I think it just goes to their business and the schedules of their suppliers.
Okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Go ahead, Bill.
So you haven't, you've denoted here a possible rain garden drainage location. Will you be proposing full stormwater management on the site when we, when you submit a plan?
Yes, we haven't designed it yet.
Any other questions, concerns? Unless I hear some objections, I think we.
Do we have new drainage requirements that we should possess?
No, not yet. Model ordinance is being revamped, I understand, and we're waiting for the next draft.
Right. So unless anybody has any further comments, whatever, I think we, you guys pretty much have direction on where we'd like to see you go, I think it's a good project, I think you look at it a little bit, make some changes, I think it's something we certainly can approve.
Just for my benefit, I'm sure you guys know, and you guys know, but is normal course of action basically revise the plans, come back next month with a more final plan?
You need to file an application.
Yeah, it's just design review.
There's no need to come back again and say we made these changes based on our previous discussion, make the changes that we talked about, adjust your plans accordingly, and you have to do a full submittal at that point.
Paige is familiar with our checklist requirements, which we go through to make sure they're complete, so we'll be doing that prior to the planning board meeting again.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm in, not that big of a rush.
Oh, you shouldn't have said that in front of your engineer. You just went to the bottom of the list.
In exchange for discounts.
Alrighty, does anybody else have anything else to add to this discussion?
Thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am, for your input. All right, while they're packing up, new and old business, we still have a couple of committees open for appointees, CONCOM and CLP?
CIP.
CIP, I'm seeing, what's a CLP? Anybody wanna volunteer? If not, we'll just kick the can down the road.
I'm on CONCOM now.
Oh, you are, okay. Okay, okay. So just CIP.
I can do it again, I, I.
I'll volunteer for CIP.
I'm sorry?
I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer for CIP.
Okay, I mean, I can do the alternate if you want, I just feel bad, I missed it last time because of work.
I'll volunteer for that.
Yeah, I'll do the alternate, yep.
That gives me like, don't have to worry about that for another six months or something. You can take the summer off. Alrighty, I have, other than that, I have nothing to report, committee reports, anybody have any committee reports?
I'll just say.
Town council?
I'll just confirm the town council approved the long sentence of the re, rescinding of the town's current development restrictions on lot 13 at Moody Point, and replacing the new restrictive covenants as set forth by the Nature Conservancy after it was passed by the board.
Yep, great.
And everything has been recorded at the register of deeds, and the property is now owned in total by the Nature Conservancy.
Beautiful.
I'd say that was unanimous.
It's good to have that finally behind us. Diane, do you have any?
No, I don't, not at this point, thank you.
Jane?
Oh.
Motion?
Motion, that would adjourn.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Anybody wanna hang around a little longer and talk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it, thank you all very much.
I'm always the second.